June 28, 2021, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into order. At this point in time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand, all our visitors to please stand. I'd call on our chaplain Trey Gooch, who will lead us in prayer, and then he will lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag and to the Tennessee flag. Commissioner Gooch, you're recognized.
way they love their family, to love the church the way they love the church, and to love Jesus the way they love Jesus, so that we may hear the words that they heard, the sweetest words on earth, "Well done," and come on in, my faithful servant. And it's through Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Good morning, everyone. Before we get into our first agenda, let's go ahead and have roll call, and then I'll bring in some special guests and recognize them. So, members, roll call.
Twenty-one present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, before we get into the agenda, I'd like to recognize the ladies of Farm Bureau. They're standing right back here. We want to thank them for everything that they always continue to do. One of them told me a minute ago, they don't know why they bring the white milk, because everybody likes the empty tissue. Chocolate milk, which is true. We should have doubled down, because we didn't get any last year, you know, because of COVID. So, but we thank you all for always thinking of us and giving us a little nourishment as we proceed through to pass our budget. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate y'all. Okay, members, next we have is reading and approval of the minutes. I call on Chairman Pro Tim Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I've reviewed the minutes of our last meeting, find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted as presented.
Heard the motion. We have a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item number F, we have no public comments requested today, so that takes us into our elections and confirmations. Chairman Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On elections and confirmations, we have one item that deals with the election of our notaries. Commissioners, you can find those on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have item H on your agenda, resolution and approval of the consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tim Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. There's been a request to remove two items from our consent agenda and move them down to the Budget and Finance Investment Committee report. Item H2, general purpose school fund budget amendment, and number nine, application for U.S. Department of Commerce broadband grant. If we can remove those items and move them down to the Budget and Finance Committee report, other than that, I find that the consent agenda is appropriate, and I move that it be adopted as presented.
Have a motion and a second to move to bump items two and nine off the consent agenda down to the, when we get to the budget. Otherwise, we will be approving the rest of the consent agenda. Any questions? Seeing none, let's call the roll on this one. Madam Clerk. All right, members, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Okay. We have no item aye. We have no unfinished business at this time, so I'd like to call on our first report is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman P.
Since we amended the consent agenda, the first thing we'll be looking at is item two, the general purpose school fund budget amendment. The reason this was pulled was not to make any changes, and I want everyone to understand that. I'm not advocating any changes. However, we did want to discuss an item that some of us have been talking about where there's a possibility of saving a great deal of money by looking at the way our roofs are bid. Now, as a commission, we cannot itemize anything in the school's budget and say, hey, we're gonna, we can say, yes, we're gonna give you X number of dollars for this, but the school has the authority to spend the money that we allocate as they see fit, not as we see fit. And that's not what I'm here about today to talk about, but basically, what I would like from the school board and their representatives, the director, is some kind of assurance that these concerns we have about the cost of the roofs, where there's large potential savings, be addressed in a timely manner with the school board and their budget. As I said, I'm not proposing that we make any changes to their budget. I'm not proposing that we pull anything from their budget, but I would like some assurance somehow that they will give a fair assessment to vendors on bidding our roof systems. If there are any other commissioners that'd like to say anything about this, I welcome the input.
Mr. Chairman.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been in some conversation recently about, there's a new roof system that we utilized on the jail, and I believe on this courthouse. The school system is investigating that. I've already received an email, at least one email, from Mr. Lee, and I know in the July meeting, so Health and Ed will be having their meeting in July, we're going to be discussing not only the utility report, that utility audit, but we're also going to be discussing this roofing system and its appropriate applications. So I, as the chairman, will give you that assurance that, yes, they have assured me that they are going to give that a fair and accurate assessment, so we can save money on those roofs. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve their budget.
Have a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
A second.
I'd like to suspend the rules and ask our superintendent if he would verbalize that commitment.
Without objection. Motion to suspend the rules to allow our superintendent and our finance director for schools to come forward and address that request.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone understands that we are going to be looking at that. We're going to be blending some funds. Not only are we going to be using our local funds, but we're also going to be using federal funds, which requires us to go to the Davis-Bacon Act. We're going to be looking at this and probably putting out different RFPs. We'll be putting out RFPs for a certain type of roof and an RFP for what we have done in the past. We're still in that stage of looking at and evaluating. Currently, we haven't even filled out, finished the application for the federal funds that we'll be using that actually will double what we get in our 177. So, yes, that is correct, what Commissioner said. We will be looking at everything, and we're just now in the initial stages of it.
Thank you, Mr. Murdaugh.
Thank you.
Mr. Boder, thank you. Okay, we're back on the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The reason I brought this up, of course, it's about money. It's always about money. You know, that's what this day in particular is about, whether we're having to have tax increases to maintain the things that we do. The superintendent just mentioned the federal money that they're getting and how he's almost going to be able to double that. With these new roof systems that we've looked at, you could almost double the amount of roofs that you're doing again. So that's why it was so important that we brought that up. But thank you.
Okay. Back on the motion, I'd prefer to go on record on this, so members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Mr. P.
Okay. Also pulled from the consent agenda was an application for U.S. Department of Commerce broadband grant. We saw this the other night in budget, passed it to you without a recommendation. The grant actually states that we'll send it forward without a match. Now, we're given the option to send it with no match, but they also say in the application that if you do a 10% match, that you have a greater chance of success on receiving these funds. We, as budget, decided that we would send it to you without a recommendation to match. However, having talked to Commissioner Reed and to our mayor, we actually have a partner, and they are willing to do the match, the 10% match of $30 million, which is basically $3 million. Commissioner Reed, if you wanted to let us know what was going on there, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The grants you're looking at right here, it's the typical grant. It's over 44 pages thick, if you've ever read any of these. But this grant is something that, if any of you, of course, I think all of you remember Jeff Davison, who was our deputy mayor. He's now an ambassador with United and has been working out there in the western part of the county right now, trying to get broadband in that area there and working with United. We have been looking at grants for the past several years. In fact, he and I were two that went to United at the very beginning over in Chapel Hill and told them what we were needing for Rutherford County, and we've been doing some experimentation, I guess you would say, out there in that rural area. We found one of the first subdivisions out there that was willing to go along to see what we could do with United, and we ran fiber to that subdivision with the agreement that members of that subdivision would pay some of it with United running it. We found out right quick what fiber has to go through in Rutherford County. Those of you that live here in Rutherford County, which are all of you knows there's very one important mineral here in Rutherford County that fiber has a hard time with. It's called limestone. And we found out out there to put that down and follow our regulations, which require all fiber and all cable to go 36 inches in the ground. We found in Iggleville, you couldn't go 36 inches in the ground. We had to go to our road superintendent, and out there in that subdivision, we went 28 inches. So, right now, United is out there running broadband due to a $1.3 million grant that has already been issued. They did that week before last announcing that grant. It's running on poles. It's what I call broadband on a stick, and it's all over the place out there right now. They're running it down main roads, they're running it on roads where I sort of fussed at them last week. I said, you're putting this on top of where fiber's been for 30 years. And they said, well, first of all, you got to get it to the main places so you can go out. So what we have done, we have found this grant, which is coming from the chambers of commerce, and what it does, I have a letter here that what we're trying to do with the county here, we're using our grant writer to help write grants in partnership with United to get these into the rural areas. And that's specifically what this grant is all about. You have to have a, and what it specifies there as a county government, you have to have a fiber provider to serve as a partner with you, and that is one of the requirements too with it. So we have United that's agreeing to go as a partner with us on this, and that way we can apply for the full $30 million on this. So what I'd like to do is make that motion is that we approve this grant to go forward with it, with United as our partner.
We have a motion to accept the grant. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Chairman P. Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I'd just like to get a little clarification from our legal counsel, that this type of relationship is perfectly legal. We have no issues with that, right? Am I correct?
I'm happy to look into that. I'm not sure of the exact arrangement, but if we're not, are we paying anything to United? Okay. If it's just a partnership where we're using it to get the grant and there's no taxpayer money being funded to United for their private services, then for this arrangement, I would think it'd be fine.
I just don't want us to get into a legal battle with AT&amp;T or Comcast or something that this was not put out for a bid or something like that.
If you'd like to approve it, subject to me getting some more information if there is a problem, I'm happy to alert the mayor to that.
Commissioner Gurley, you want to make that as an amendment to the motion?
I can, or I can just take it that, except our county attorney's word that he's going to investigate it, and if we find out, then we'll deal with it at our next meeting.
Okay. Back on the main motion, we have a second. Are any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Chairman P.
I have a little trouble talking this morning, maybe that chocolate milk working me over, I'm not sure.
Excuse me, just a second. Commissioner Gurley.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, is, are we getting ready to go into the, our general fund budget and so on?
Yes, sir.
If you will entertain me, I would like to make a motion for something prior to that. It has a bearing, I think, on our appropriation and so on.
I think it'd be better if we heard the appropriations, and then if you wanted to make a motion to whatever is your issue, I'd like for the members to hear the appropriation request of what's being presented, and then if you want to make a motion to what's presented, be appropriate.
Yeah, this will not be amending the appropriation or affect the appropriation in any manner.
Okay.
I'll leave it to you.
I don't have a problem with Commissioner addressing something.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gurley.
Yeah, the best I can tell, we discussed, have discussed this spring as we've gone through budget, bringing the table of our public safety people up. That is not in our appropriation. We have across-the-board pay raise for all employees. We have some monies left in the CARES Act, if I'm correct. I've talked to our finance director, and she assures me after the public safety buildings and State Farm building that we still have some funds in there, and that we might term it, more common term is hazard pay or extra duty pay or whatever, but the feds determine it, call it premium pay. But basically, it's pay above and beyond for what they deem essential workers. I don't think if we come back, if we skip over that this year, I don't think we come back next year, it's with it being an election year, as I've said, a meeting or two back, that it's going to stand a chance. So my motion is, I would like to make a motion that we pay our essential workers as defined by the CARES Act, which should include most EMS, law enforcement, public health, EMA, fire, that we pay them a 4% premium pay for the coming year, beginning July 1, and paid for our, out of the CARES Act.
Okay. You've heard the motion, and we have a second. Let me ask Ms. Nolan, now, the letter that I distributed to, had on your desk at the last full commission meeting, had a response from comptroller, starts like Wilson, but Mumpower, and when he came back in that letter, Ms. Nolan said that items four and five, which were the State Farm building and the public health and safety buildings, met approval under his interpretation of the CARES Act COVID-related money. As far as items one, two, and three, in that response, being able to use that money, they wanted to do a little more research on that, as far as allocating those, whether or not it was permissible in the CARES Act money. And then I think that if we were maybe to wait until August, we might have a better idea of where that, how we could use that, because even pause falls into that category. I mean, they wear bulletproof vests. How do we designate what is actually COVID-related? I know Smyrna has given, in talking to Mayor Reed, they have given what they deem as a, and it's broken down, 1,500, 1,000, maybe 500, something like that, as a, you can't call it a bonus, they call it a stimulus. Ms. Nolan, do you think it's premature at this point in time? We can always come back and do this, and, turn your mic on, please.
My request to y'all would be to come back in August, let us close, let us, my, you know, it's funny how the mayor and I read this, there's some things, it's like, why, yeah, looks to me like we can pay it, you know, and I was really surprised at the comptroller coming back saying, you know, that one leads to more discussion, when I can look at the FAQs and it speaks pretty plainly. But I'd like to see what their hesitation is on why they are not looking at it, the same way I'm looking at it.
He said he'd get back with us in a short period of time. I don't think there's one person in here that doesn't want to do this.
I think since this can be done retroactively to July 1 in August, I'll withdraw my motion, but be assured that I will bring this back up in August.
Okay. Need to withdraw the second. Commissioner Gammon, is that okay?
But there again, I think everyone in here wants to do this, you know, because this was an extraordinary year for us, and we had a lot of employees that put their lives on the line. They went headstrong and went forward into the unknown, and hopefully, we'll get the acknowledgement to move forward on this, if that's okay.
And two, if we could bring, if we could bring forward to you, which is better, 4% or flat amount, because that flat amount might be a higher percentage to those folks at the lower end. Let us give you options.
Okay.
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 I really want to convince you.
Chairman P.
Well, Joe, you took the last thing off my agenda that I had penciled in. I was talking to Chairman Allen a few minutes before we started here, and that's still been one of our concerns. Both of us a bit concerned that, you know, we had a try at an 8% increase for our public safety people, and we really got started a little bit late in our budget process. However, we're not through with that dog. We're going to keep kicking until we get something going here. And one of the things that we had discussed, and also with Lisa, she had sent budget members some of these notations on what's allowed and what's not, and it's still kind of up in there, and that's why, you know, we're putting this off to August. But no, I want to tell our employees, we're not going to let this lie. This is something we want to do for you, and something we feel that is deserved, and, you know, if not this year, then, you know, that's something we'll be working on. Having said all that, we'll get back on track here, and we're going to look at our next item, which is item J1A, and these are resolutions basically to tidy up our bookkeeping at the end of the year. The first three items that you should be seeing went through budget. They're basically unassigned fund balance money that's moved for workman's comp and judgments and unemployment. The last three, none of our committees have seen. These were last-minute findings that we need to correct, basically employee independent insurances where there were some changes, some guards that had left employment, and some part-time personnel payments. So I'll start resolution, being resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general fund amendments be amended as follows. Employee benefits, workman's comp, $250,000, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $250,000. Under miscellaneous for judgments, $800,000. That's for future liability claims, and a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $800,000. And under unemployment, various departments for unemployment, $445, $300, and $120 for total unassigned fund balance of $965. Next is employee insurance, employee independent insurance, $1,730, $825, $2,005, with a decrease expenditure of $4,560. Then under juvenile services for guards, $3,700, and a decrease in the line items that are already there of attendance of $3,700. And then for rural fire, increased expenditures for part-time personnel, $3,500, and a decrease expenditure under other salary and wages of $3,500. Resolve this 28th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any questions? We'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Our next item is item J1B. And this actually shows the fund and the rates for each item in our budget. Now, the total has not changed. We've moved some pennies around. For instance, debt service, we've moved some money out of it, ambulance service. But what I'll do is I'll read this first section down to our totals there. The rest of that, I'll let you pick up. Mr.?
I deeply apologize. I know you're trying to get through this, but I'm not sure if I can bring it up now or do we need to go to the next phase. But like Commissioner Gurley brought up, I just had a few questions about the employees and it's kind of like, we kind of gave them maybe yes. And I know everybody's worked really, really hard, Finance Committee and everything, I'm in no way questioning, but, you know, gosh, we, you know, I wish we'd have never put out there what the possibility was they could get, but you have to through the budget process. My question is, is insurance, I think, is going up this year. Am I correct or not?
I'm sorry?
Insurance, is it going up this year on employees?
3.8%.
Okay. What does that mean for the average employee?
It really depends on what their plan is.
Just grab one.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have any document up here ready to tell you what that is.
Well, is it 3.8, I guess?
It's a 3, it was a 3.8 overall.
Okay.
But then there are choices.
Right.
Based on coverages and deductibles, but an average, I don't...
It's a seesaw, I know that. I was on Insurance Committee and things on that, but I'm just saying, how is that going to affect any money they do get? And I'm not talking about this understanding about after July, August and all that, and I deeply understand that and I think that's a great move. My question is, is, you know, not beating this horse again, it's just that we had a good pay plan at one point and we got away from it. And the kicker is, we had a difference in pay at one time, but at least, you know, I brought this up before, at least throw a bone or something, and that's a terrible way to put it, but even longevity pay, if you're up at $25, that can't be astronomical for the employees here. And at least, like I said, when you get toward Christmas, they got something. But the insurance is still going to eat into some of their paychecks from whatever pay raise they get, you know, on top of that. And I know back on Insurance Committee, we were trying to bump it down, you know, to 80/20 and these type things. And this is going to be a continued issue forever. I've served on the Gatsby Committee with Ms. Nolan and some other people, and the insurance issue is never going to go away with how you're supposed to fund it and everything. So I'm not even going to get into that. And I know she knows what I'm talking about and I'd say probably you do, Mayor and Commissioner P. I'm just saying, before we leave today, you know, I just feel like we've got to do something. So I don't know what it is. I know that we want to hit that so-called zero tax rate and everything, that's wonderful. And I know that some citizens that have moved here from out of state, who came from higher taxes, are going to throw a fit if you raise even just 1%. I know that. But that's what they're used to and that's not the direction that we go here in Tennessee. We have, we have a good tax rate, we have the money that's controlled and guided and taken in the direction it should be, and there's watchdogs on it. But I just wish we could do something.
I think with the, what the Commission has chosen to do, with my recommendation of 4% raise, lift the table for everyone, not just, not just first responders or those in public safety. And then add on top of that, for those who qualify, which is a large majority, there are very few that have topped out after been here 20 years, so you're getting another 1.75 on top of that. So today's increase of pay to our employees is a 5.75, which is pretty good, coming at the heels of a terrible year with hotel motel tax, restaurant tax, et cetera. We've been fortunate that we are where we are today without a tax increase. But I don't think we're prepared today, Ms. Nolan, Finance Committee's prepared to move forward, to come up with an exact number. I don't think that that 3.8% will exceed that 5.75 that they're getting.
Even, even if it's the same, 4% on a salary is much larger than 4% on a premium.
That's correct.
Mr. Gammon, I assure you, Budget has looked at this fairly thoroughly. I look back in the back, I see Ms. Stevenson and she's basically worked her fingers to the bone trying to get numbers to us to crunch, working on the 8% pay increase that was brought up, and also longevity pay. Commissioner Johnson actually had brought up to me a few weeks ago and, you know, none of these are a closed book. You know, I have the same desire you have for our employees, but I'm like the mayor, I don't think we're in a position right now without doing a tax increase at this time, which I personally am not ready to do. But this is not something that I'm willing to lay down. You know, as you recall, you know, I brought that up in our public safety and I intend for us to continue to see what we can do to help us retain our employees. Because we're just like every other business in this county and this country, we're hurting for losing employees and we need them, they're essential, and whatever we need to do to retain those people, you know, we're going to have to make adjustments. Having said that, I'll continue with this resolution unless you... Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Resolution authorizing the tax levy in Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. Section 1 being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 28th day of June 2021, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 shall be $2.2194 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies. General, County General, .5783 cents. Ambulance Service Fund, .0588 cents. The Highway Fund, .0099 cents. The General Purpose School Fund, 1.0474 cents. Education Capital Projects Fund, .0550 cents. And Debt Service, .47 cents. For a total of 2.2194 cents. We're resolved on this 28th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Piercy. Any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll be on the board. Members, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record a vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our last item is a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2021. Without objection from the Commission, instead of reading each one of these items on about 20 pages here, I'm going to give you the totals. If anybody has a question, you can stop me. I'll read Section 1, being resolved by the Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee on the 28th day of June 2021, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutes, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the capital outlaying for the meeting, the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022, according to the following schedule. Under General Fund, it's $122,446,144. Rutherford County Economic Development, $197,670. Our Solid Waste Sanitation Fund is $5,785,867. Ambulance Fund is $15,888,317. Special Purpose Fund through the Sheriff's Department is $20,000. The Drug Control Fund is $488,000. The Highway Fund is $11,793,467. The General Purpose School Fund is $441,796,206. Our Central Cafeteria Fund is $21,912,382. Education Capital Projects Fund is $7,733,917. Our Debt Service Fund is $58,206,221. The rest of the sections there, I'm not going to read unless someone asks for that. Basically covers our nonprofits, which are basically pretty low items. Resolved this 28th day of June 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Johnson on the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record a vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to take a moment to thank you and our Finance Director, our Assistant Finance Director, and especially our budget members for all the hard work that you've put in on this. Especially want to thank you for the honor of having me as your chairman. But it's been a good year, it's been trying, we've seen things that we've never, I never thought we'd see in our lifetime, and all our departments have done an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your hard work. Item number two, Health and Education Report, no report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works and Planning Committee, no report. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Chairman Harris.
I don't have a report, but I'm getting a lot of phone calls from people interested in the judge vacancy that's coming up, so I just want to clarify, we're, you have to put in an application based on our law. You can do it up until the moment of the meeting, but you have to go through that process so that all the commissioners can look at the resumes. And we announced this last meeting, so we will be addressing this on the next hearing committee in August.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Members, under item K, Other Business, we need to discuss allocating $100,000 fully refundable in the letter of intent for the purchase of the State Farm building. This is non-refundable. We received the LLI late Friday afternoon. This will be going back to them, so it's fully refundable, $100,000, for us to go through the appropriate steps to make sure that we understand what we're getting. There'll be a letter from State Farm or from, from State Farm and the landlord that we're purchasing from, JRM or JDM Properties, what all comes with that building, business, personal property, the desk, everything inside the building that they're saying that they don't want. All that will go through our due diligence process. So the $100,000 needs to be appropriated today. Then we'll be able to come back at our August meeting, the second week of August, to see what the full understanding is of that, of that request to move forward at that point in time. Question, Ree?
Mr. Chairman, I've never bought a $25 million house. But every one I've ever bought, I've had to put in earnest money. I think whenever I've ever negotiated any type of contract, and I think that's what they're requesting right here. So if you're needing that motion, I make the motion to, make the motion for the $100,000 that we, we give that, that ability to do so, to negotiate that contract of $100,000.
And I believe, Ms. Nolan, that that will be taken out of the grant that we have because we did receive the money this past week.
The grant, that we'll do that.
Appropriate $100,000 for building purchase out of Fund 127.
Correct.
It was on the second. Presser Kush on the second. Some members, we did receive the $33 million this past week and Mr. Beatty has that on deposit.
And that will do that effective for the 2122 fiscal year.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record a vote.
19 yes, 2 no.
Thank you very much. Members, that brings us to statements and announcements. Mr. Gurley.
Yes, we were discussing broadband and approved participating in or applying for a grant. I was made aware of reading an industry publication that I get here about a week or so ago that the Federal Communications Commission is releasing sometime soon, 7 point something billion with a B, in grant opportunities for rural broadband, enhancing access to school programs, et cetera. So that's something that those interested in broadband might want to take note of and further investigate.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I think we'll see broadband money continue to come. I was talking to Commissioner Reed and Mr. Bart Gordon, former Congressman, Bart Gordon was in town recently, he's planning on moving back, I believe, and he said that this is similar to electrification of our country back at the beginning of the last century, that those dollars are going to continue to come for broadband expansion. Is that correct? Commissioner Reed, you've got your microphone, you're recognized.
That's correct. But, you know, we have also asked something about United. Many of us did not realize just recently that United is our provider for our 911 system. It's also for our PSAPs and our dispatch.
That's correct.
So we've been working with United for a number of years and they've always done an excellent job for us. United already runs fiber through Murfreesboro right here and has been providing a lot of the service to us. So Rutherford County is not a stranger to United, United's not a stranger to Rutherford County. So we're hoping that by working together with them and helping them with some grants and getting that done, we can, you're looking at the rural area out here, there's an estimate of somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million that would get a good part of rural Rutherford County. the neighborhood of 50 million that would get a good part of rural Rutherford County into it. The thing is, that's, that's a, that's a number that's out there that we really don't have a lock-in number, because it's just the fact that you are causing competition with a bunch of other people out there. And we've already seen that out there where we're going into Iggle, because there's a lot of competition between Comcast and AT&amp;T in that area right now. Because, like I said, that, those lines are going up on those poles right now. And whenever you see outside the house, a big spool of wire out there that's United, those people are saying, well, how can I get that compared to what I've got already in my house? So that's what you're seeing. And, you know, competition is not a bad thing. It never is a bad thing in what we're trying to do out there. But I just thought I would mention that fact, that we are already involved with United in, in some situations right here in this county. But before I sit down, let me invite all of you out to Rockville, July 3, for the annual picnic that we have every year. It's the oldest Fourth of July celebration in Rutherford County that's been in continuous operation since all the way back into the 20s.
Hot and watermelons cold, always at Rockville. And Commissioner Blair, it's a good place to be, a lot of fun out in, out in Rockville. I'm sure they'll be playing baseball. Any other statements or announcements?
Chairman?
Commissioner Gammon?
I first want to thank all of the Commissioners here, and all of the heads of departments. I know everybody worked really hard. I just really appreciate working with the Commission. We may not all vote the same. We may vote different, but we still can shake each other's hand and talk like human beings, like grownups. We may not agree, but I real, that means a lot in government, too. And I just want, that's, I just want to stress that out of my heart.
Other statements and announcements? Thank you, Commissioner Gammon. Well said.
I want to take just a moment to say something very similar to what Commissioner Gammon just said. I want to thank each one of you, this Commission, this Commission works well together. It's been a challenging year. You know, between masks, no masks, quarantining, social distancing, you know, it's, it's been tough this past year. We, you know, probably in March last year, we were all nervous. We were all scared. We didn't know what was coming our way. But I think the, the worst is behind us now. Rutherford County didn't hesitate to crank back up. I know wherever you go in Rutherford County, trying to get in someplace to eat on Friday and Saturday night, it's an hour wait, wherever you go. But, so you can't keep us down long. But this Commission has worked very well trying to keep things on the tracks as we move forward through this budgeting process. I also want to thank Mr. Spurlock, Mr. Spurlock, you and your board for working with us. You first came out with a 5% increase in pay, and we said we can get a four, and you brought it back down to where they're, we're all working together. So our, our school board and, and this Commission has worked very well. We thank you for that. I want to thank Lisa and your department, Finance. You've, you've helped steer us with my recommendations in working as we started back in January, working with every department head. I want to thank every department head. When I asked you to bring in your wants and needs budget, thank you for doing that. Some of you came in and carved even more out of your budgets, because we didn't know where we were going to be. We didn't want a tax increase. We knew that at the end of this day. So we thank you, and I want to thank basically all of our county employees. Because in my book, every one of them were essential this past year. They came into work, even if they were working from home, but the majority of them came into work, and we classed all of them as being essential, because we do feel that this is the best county in the state of Tennessee. And it's something that you all can be very proud of. Anything else to come before the body, for the will of this organization? Seeing none, we will adjourn.